Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Councilpro Tim Robinson.
She's been excused.
Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. For item four, this is the approval of the proposed minutes in person and virtual workshop meeting for November. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is for item three. I need council to take action on the approval of the agenda.
Approval with amendments, Council President.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
I said approval with amendments.
Approval with amendments. Those amendments would be, sir?
Okay, so under, under, under six legal. There is a resolution to approve the new employee handbook.
Correct.
Okay, so. I would like to have that item removed based on the fact that I talked to Mr. John Clark and I explained to him clearly that you cannot move a resolution with two items in it at the same time. So he has in here, not only does he have the approval of the handbook, but he also has us, him requesting us to rescind the executive order from the emergency manager which created this handbook in the first place. These are two separate items. I asked him to put it on two separate resolutions. He did not do so, and at this time I would like to have that item removed from the agenda.
Okay, so just to be clear, you would not want to look at those items? I'm looking at it right now, it has two resolutions. Now therefore be resolved as it relates to the rescinding of the handbook. And the second would be a further resolve that the City of Highland Park adopts the updated employee handbook. Would you like to separate these items or is your preference to remove this entire item from the agenda?
At the moment, my preference is to remove this entire item. At the, at the moment, I feel like this was something that Mr. Clark should have clearly done. He did not do so, I am not inclined to do his job for him.
Got it, legal.
Other council. Do we have support?
I have a question.
Madam, if you would.
So, Mr. Shafi, could you make that a little bit more clear? Maybe I missed the spot where we are, we are six A.
Yes, ma'am.
To approve the new employee handbook?
Yeah.
And then you say there's something else in here that you don't want in that resolution.
Okay, so it says here, if you go down one, two, three, four on the fifth, whereas it says now therefore be it resolved, the City of Highland Park, City Council rescinds the prior employee personnel handbook dated November ninth, two thousand and four. Okay, that rescension is, 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 is necessary for this handbook to move forward because there is an executive directive, directive ninety-one for this handbook of the emergency manager that must be rescinded first before we approve this handbook. It's gotta be rescinded first.
I'm gonna give my time.
Okay, these are two separate items.
Okay. Good evening, council. So I did have an opportunity to confer with Mr. Clark. He did have a meeting with Councilman Ashafi indicating that that is an issue that could be resolved one of two ways. That would be to split the vote, vote on one and then the other. I guess a concern that I would have is that if we continue to have two items within one resolution, it might set a dangerous precedent.
Exactly.
And so if we need to separate those out, that's fine. The other issue is that even though the handbook, the directive relating to the handbook must be approved by council, the actual updated employee handbook does not. So we can either handle it that way in terms of just rescinding it or we can come back on the eighteenth with two separate resolutions.
So are we saying that we need to change the wording of the?
We could. Need to break it up.
We could.
Or we could act on a portion of it. We could strike the second section. We could start, strike the section that says be a further resolve. At that point, we don't have to act on it. We have the ability right now to go through with an ink pen and strike that second resolution.
Let us do that.
Council President, I am, we, we, Council President, I am not inclined to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, does he have support?
Okay, one more question.
Yes.
You're not inclined to take out those wordings and just say we amending? Because normally we just amend the resolution. Normally that's what we do on amending the resolution so that we can move forward. So if rescinding should come first, maybe we just don't approve the handbook today and just rescind? This is just a suggestion to everyone here. Is that something that may be feasible so that we won't have so many things coming back? We just, we kind of?
I'd be open to that.
So you'd be open to just rescinding it today and the handbook is pushed back to the eighteenth?
Yes.
I may be amenable to that.
So that, therefore, we have a motion on the floor, we need to, the floor is still open. We have a proposed motion on the floor, there is no support for it, so you still have the opportunity to alter that motion.
Okay, I would like to alter that motion in favor of what Ms. Manica has just said about us. I'm sorry, for what Councilwoman Manica, I have no right to call you by your first name, you're Councilwoman. I apologize for that, that, that council, Councilwoman Manica has stated that we vote on the rescinding of the order only and we push the handbook until the eighteenth of this month.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi.
Second.
To approve the amended agenda, that amendment will be for item six A to strike the second resolution. That resolution be a further resolve that the City of Highland Park adopts the updated employee handbook as prepared and presented by the City Labor Council. That section shall be stricken. And we have a second from Councilwoman Martin. If we have no further deliberation on that, we will go to taking a vote on the approval of the agenda with the amendment proposed by Mr. Ashafi.
So wait a minute, so we're not, we're not changing?
We struck that whole line, so.
So we're not rescinding today?
We are only rescinding today and we will not be approving the handbook today.
So then wouldn't that have been changed, that the resolution to rescind, wouldn't we change that wording?
Yes, Ms. Martin, Mr. Ashafi made a motion to amend the agenda. In that amendment, he proposed that we not address at all the adoption of an employee handbook at this time because he had further questions. I'm striking it through with my pen on my document now. And that we only resolve to rescind the prior employee personnel manual dated nine November two thousand and four. So that means instead of having two resolutions, it would only be one. Okay, and you offered your support for that.
Yeah, so I make a vote that we strike a question.
Okay. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll on the amended agenda?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Again, for those in the audience, that is the separation, we had a resolution on the table under the legal department that had two resolutions. One was the rescinding of the prior employee handbook and the second was to approve the adopted updated handbook. That has been changed, we're only going to look at a vote on rescinding today. Thank you very much. Sorry, thank you, Councilor, she corrected my language. We only had the one resolution, we had two actions in that resolution. Now we will only have one action. Thank you very much. Going on to item four, this is the approval of the, of the proposed minutes, the in-person and virtual workshop meeting for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. City Council, what is your pleasure?
I want to make a motion for the proposed minutes of Highland Park City Council, virtual and in-person workshop meeting on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, ma'am, we have a motion on the floor to approve the in-person virtual workshop meeting for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, do we have a second?
Council President, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I don't mean to be critical here, but there's nothing here. All I see is our names, zero absence, entered at six P M, a quorum being present. Counsel was declared in session. The following items discussed, one, City of Highland Park new employee handbook, two, good welfare, adjournment, workshop meeting adjourned at six forty-three, nothing.
And that was all that occurred, sir?
I, I mean.
It said the following items were discussed.
Council President, I'm just saying, no record of what was discussed. I mean, like, you know, what we had to say or, or nothing of that nature.
So, so it's December, every meeting that we have where there's actual voting.
Uh huh.
Those items are recorded, we only record our votes. We don't, with the, the Zoom is what records our actual conversations, so we don't approve the Zoom.
Okay, we don't record any discussions, just the votes.
Correct.
Okay, all right, I'm done.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica to approve the virtual workshop meeting minutes for November twentieth. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much. For item four, approval of proposed minutes, this is the in-person virtual regular meeting for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the in-person and virtual regular meeting for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the regular meeting minutes for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Martin, would you please call a roll on that, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Next, citizens, this is a section where we set time aside for Mayor McDonald to speak to council. Mayor is online virtually. Madam Mayor, good evening, do you have something you want to offer?
Good evening, good evening to the citizens of Highland Park, good evening to the honorable body. Thank you for having me this evening. I really want to just thank everyone who came out to the Narcan training that was held at the chat with the chief. It was very informative, people learned a lot, they was certified with a certificate. And so now they can help people in the streets know what to do in case something happens, someone in your family, anyone. They can make sure that if anything happens, that they are prepared and ready to help. So thank you all for showing up for that, it was a great turnout. Those that signed up, a lot of them came. I was very pleased with that. Also, this week, this week before Friday, if you are organization, your block club, your church, nonprofit, if you would like to put a ornament on the tree, the Christmas tree or the holiday tree, it's not a Christmas tree, the holiday tree, please bring that ornament to City Hall. We are asking that you bring in what is a hundred millimeters, which is probably about four inches all the way around to City Hall, to the front desk, put your logo on it. If you're a church, please put your logo or your name, nonprofits, whatever it is, please do that. We want to make sure this holiday tree is not just for the city, it is for everybody in the city. So please come out. Also, on December ninth, there's quite a few activities going on for the seniors from twelve to two at the Ernest T. Ford Fieldhouse Rec Center. There will be a holiday party sponsored by the senior department and the City of Highland Park. Come on out, have some fun, some food, some raffles, some gifts. And we want to celebrate you on that day. At three o'clock is a Christmas in the park. At the Massachusetts Park, there will be a Christmas in the park for children, for adults. We have a big tent coming for seniors, Parker Pride Alumni Association is sponsoring this and in partnership with the City of Highland Park. So please, if you want to come, sign up if you're a senior, right after the senior lun, uh, party. Hopefully we'll have transportation, our senior coordinator can talk a little bit more about that and bring you over to the park. Then at six o'clock, six P M, we will have the tree lighting ceremony. We're gonna have some, some people singing, we're gonna light the tree and it will go on for about thirty, forty-five minutes. So come out and make this a whole day of fun, food and activities. We want to celebrate Highland Park on that day. So that's basically all I have today. I want to thank everyone, everyone who has been calling, asking, giving me information, letting me know that things are happening in the city and that so I can contact the departments and let them know to look into that. I want to thank everyone who is getting involved and making sure our city is, is safe, clean, healthy for everyone, not just for some, but for everyone. I appreciate you so much and you guys have a great evening. If there's any questions for me later, this is, the council will either allow me to speak or you can always, always contact me. Please, contact me at G McDonald at HighlandParkMI.gov or you can contact my administrative assistant, that's M Wyatt at HighlandParkMI.gov or you can call three one three two five two zero zero five zero, extension two forty and she will take the message and get it to me. I return calls as, within twenty-four hours. So if you have a call, you have something going on, let me know, I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the section where we offer the floor to citizens for citizens' participation for two minutes on any item which appears on the agenda, and that's information technology, legal, police and recreation for tonight. Those four items are open for citizens to discuss them for two minutes. If you would like to address, City Council, please make your way to the podium. And this conversation is again directed at information technology, the resolution to redesign the city website. The legal department is the resolution to, now that resolution needs to appear to rescind. Madam, madam clerk, let me make sure I clarify that, the resolution to approve the rescinding.
I titled it resolution to rescind the prior employee personnel manual.
Thank you, ma'am, just want to make sure we have that, okay. This is resolution to purchase a digital FOIA system, that's also under legal, under police, resolution to purchase the intoxicilizer nine thousand. Resolution to purchase the police scheduling software under recreation, it's a resolution requesting approval for transportation partnership. Sir, thank you very much for joining us tonight, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Mark Ashley Price, I'm the treasurer of the Highland Park School Board. For number five, resolution to redesign the city website. I highly suggest the city council to pass that resolution because I don't think that, I don't, to my acknowledgement, I don't think that the city website been updated for quite some time. So I highly suggest that council people to pass that resolution. I'm sure it would not just mean a lot to myself, but also to the rest of the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any other citizens that would like to be heard as it relates to agenda items? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Darwin Griffin and I represent Urban Solutions. And I was asked to be here to present in front of the body to talk about the transportation component that we have through Urban Solutions to assist with transporting seniors to the various different places. We just recently have transported people to get their chiropractic tests. And we've also did some things over in La Belle as well as with Gabrielle Towers. One of the things we wanted to do was we were offering this information for you for free. Dr. Sharon Dumas is the chair and she's the president of Urban Solutions. And we just wanted to make ourselves allowed to be able to go and transport seniors to the various different places. One of the things we were looking at doing was transporting seniors to do some holiday shopping over at the Walmart at Ford Road and Southfield Freeway. So are there any questions that you have to ask?
Members? I see none, sir, thank you so much.
That's something new, Council President.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, 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 that's something I didn't know that we were allowed to respond.
No, you, so you can, you can, if you had questions for the gentleman, so I would just, no, no, I would just write them down so that when the time comes, now we know who we're talking to. So sir, would you be willing to come back to the podium now? This is just, thank you for your introduction, but I want to make sure that we keep it to two minutes. You do have an item that's on the agenda and at that point, that will be an opportunity for you to address that.
Brother Fred, I love it.
Thank you.
I mean, that was something new for a second, I was gonna say, what's going on?
Okay, anyone else? I see no one. Okay, citizens, thank you very much, so let us move into our agenda, this is item five, under information technology, the resolution to redesign the city website. Good evening, ma'am, are you speaking on behalf of item five?
Yes, I am. Hey, man. All right.
Hold on one second, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. What is your pleasure on this item so that we can get the floor open?
Support with questions?
We have a motion on the floor, this is a motion to approve?
I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion for a resolution to redesign the city website.
And you have questions? So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, do we have support to support, to, for approval? We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Madam, Ms. Martin, you have questions, we have a speaker here, would you like to have the speaker address us first or would you like to ask your question first?
I don't know, because I don't know.
Well, let's, let's let Ms. Brown, yeah, Ms. Brown, the floor is yours.
Awesome, so thank you for this opportunity to be before you tonight. I thought that this would be my due diligence as far as working on this project. Something I've been working on since the previous administration, so it's been a long time coming. So the city's website was upgraded from two thousand and eight back in twenty sixteen. And it's been quite some time since we've updated. And since I've been in this position as public relations, a lot of the complaints, you know, come back that it's hard to navigate the website. And so I wanted to see, okay, well, let's try and find something on the website myself. And it took me about thirty minutes, which is a long time when you're trying to search for a document. So if it took me thirty minutes, it could take somebody else an hour, they probably can't even find it. And so MuniWeb, who has been working on our website since two thousand and sixteen, has done a great job, but we're on an old platform. So the platform that we're on, none of the municipalities that they're with now, they don't use this platform. Our system is outdated, is very difficult on the back end to try and keep everything updated because the assessor's office even right now needs to be able to have their information out on the website and for me to try and design that is extremely difficult. So I've had to contact MuniWeb for them to assist me with building that part out. With the new platform, it will also bring us into compliance with the American Disabilities Act federally because our site has to be capable for those who may be hard of hearing, that can't see well, right? They got to be able to increase the font on the page, they got to be able to press the button so it'll speak to them. There's certain things that the website just does not do. And is very, very difficult to download forms sometimes, to find the correct form sometimes, to get it to the correct person, you know? And so through MuniWeb, they have agreed to assist us with upgrading the website to transform it to, not transform it, but migrate it to the new platform. So one is easier for people to access the information. One thing that will be available on the site will be a drop-down box that says how do I, right? So how do I find a form, how do I pay my taxes, how do I pay my water bill? So it'll be a little bit easier to kind of find different things on the site. Also, it will be in compliance with ADA as well as making it easier for you to just navigate just simple things, you know, trying to find phone numbers for the administration or the city council. You know, trying to find information in regards to community and economic development because as new developments come in, there's paperwork, there's different things that has to be submitted, but it's hard to find it. I, it literally took me a minimum of thirty minutes just to find one form and I feel really bad about that. And so after speaking with MuniWeb for a long time, we finally was able to kind of talk things out, right? The budget, it was already included in the budget when the budget passed in July through the tech department. And so I'm excited to actually really try and get this going because the process could take anywhere from four to six to up to sixteen weeks to get completed simply because we have so much information currently on our website and to try and migrate all of that over, we have to do it in increments. And so that's what I'm working on and I hope that you guys will take that in consideration and do this not just for us, but for the residents as well. Questions?
Yes, I do. You said that, what's the name of the organization?
MuniWeb.
What, okay, so you said. You've been dealing with them for six years?
Yes.
Did you, because right now we're talking about paying about eleven thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
So is there another website that you possibly looked at to see if we can maybe not pay as much?
So because we already have that contract with MuniWeb, this would be considered an upgrade. So the actual redesign is about four thousand, it's the migration portion that costs so much. So it's just that portion that's being transferred over because we have so much information. So that's what the breakdown of that is.
Okay, and you, okay, so you said that because we already have a contract with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in the monthly reoccurring, it's saying that we're gonna pay thirty percent, thirty percent due at contract signing.
Right. No, 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 so it, so we already have a current contract with them. This is just their wording as far as what we're doing as far as the migration of the site and then the redesign. So the monthly reoccurring, that's something that we've already been paying because they helped to maintain the site. So typically like agendas and minutes, I know that she takes care of some of it, Ms. Brown. And then for other things I go through, I have to go through MuniWeb for them to update. So that reoccurring cost is something that we already currently pay them to upkeep the site, to add different things to the site. That's also what's covering the cost for them to add the assessors section to the website as well. So that we've already started working on as far as building out that platform.
So then this, when it says thirty? So then this, when it says thirty, thirty percent signing contract and then thirty percent after completion.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying that that's not, that's not the case? And then it also says that there will be an increase after five years. There's an annual increase.
Mm-hmm, which is standard. Yep, that's standard, which is the same thing that we had before.
How long is our contract with them?
So, um, as of today, Lackey, is that gonna be different or is that gonna remain this month to month now? Yeah.
So we could look at another possible, it's possible.
It's possible. Yes, it's possible. Yes.
That we could be maybe, possibly just saying that's possible.
Maybe possible.
Okay, um, okay, and then I do like some of the, I liked a lot of the features. Like, I read that it's two dollars per one gigabyte per month.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? I did like that. I like that. I, I felt like what I was seeing, that the development would definitely be user-friendly. I agree with you. I was looking for the Zoom link and that took me about forty-five minutes to find it. Um, which I was looking for that and found a master plan. So I found something else, looking for something else.
Absolutely.
I really, really like that. Um, my other questions are, so with this new website development.
Mm-hmm.
We have like block clubs, CDAC. Is there a section where they can?
It will be.
Meetings are.
Yes, so that's something that I actually spoke with MuniWeb about literally last week, right? Um, because granted, the city of Highland Park has different events. The community has events, right? And it's, it's, it's so hard to try and figure out what all those events are. So this will allow for us to have a community calendar. So people can submit their requests and then I can click yes and add it to the community calendar. Now, I can't click yes on everything, right? Because there's gonna be some events that we just gonna be like, I can't put that on the, on the city's website. But, you know, different meetings that you just mentioned, um, different events, maybe there's a block club party or, uh, maybe there's a, a garage sale or stuff like that, that can be inputted onto the calendar, onto that community calendar. So that is something that I did speak with them about. And so as far as the migration costs, a lot of that is just because we have so much information. We have so much stuff on there. If you were to look at the backend of that, it's scary, right? And so even for me, as a person who's built websites, the backend of this website is scary, is terrifying because there's so many different sections in trying to input that information. And if you don't have the right, um, coding, you can jack up the entire site. The new platform, oh, I could just drag and drop, copy and paste, you know? Whatever makes it easier because I have to maintain that on the backend, you know? And so for it to be easier for not just myself, but anyone that comes after me or maybe for city, you know, just different people who has to add stuff to it, it's so much easier. So the cost associated is really the migration of transferring all of that information over to the new platform. And I did look at, there was, uh, one company that reached out to me who had an original cost of like eight thousand. But after he saw everything and tried to, it's a input, all the different features that I wanted, it was gonna cost us more than that. And so with MuniWeb, it was originally at fourteen. They got it down to ten for me because that's what we had agreed to as far as the, um, the budget. And so they're willing to work with us in every aspect. And so for them to bring down their pricing to assist us, I think was awesome.
Um, my, um, other questions were, it was talking about, where are we here? I know we'd definitely be able to go mobile.
Yes, yes, yes. We will be able to have a mobile version, yes. So you could pull it up, um, and it won't look so just crammed, right? But it'd actually scroll. It'd give you that scroll feature.
Okay, and then I like that you said you can zoom. Um, what is my next question? So what about flyers? Anything about social media?
So there will be integration features, right? So my idea is to, so the City of Novi, which is the website who I want to, um, kind of duplicate, right? It's just how they have the inter- integration from their Facebook, the Instagram, the YouTube. How you're able to pull up those YouTube videos right on their website. You know, they actually have features where, you know, if you wanna follow their Facebook page or their Twitter or their, well, it's X now. But, you know, all those different socia ls, you could just click a button and it just follows them. Um, go ahead.
Just like Mr. Spike, he's doing a tree lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Would he be able to in?
So that would go through the community calendar, right?
Okay.
So that would go through the community calendar. There would be a form. You could select the date. You could select the time. You could select, you could enter whatever information you wanna be able to enter. And, uh, it will populate, come to me. I would see it. I click yes. We can add it and it pops up for everyone to see when they go to the site.
And then there's also like, did I read it correctly, that if you sign up on the website, it'll let you, it'll disperse anybody who has registered?
So not for that part, right? Because that is considered, uh, that is a company we use called Granicus that would, that was, right? So that's what we use for our email and text updates, right? So if you was to send, say you did have something, you can send that to me directly. I always, um, I have it set up where it automatically sends out an email every Sunday. So that it keeps you updated with what's happening throughout the week. And if it's a non-city event, I put in there, non-city event, but this is what's happening, right? So if I don't know about it, I can't send it out. And so that's been the major issue about some of the events happening within the city, is that I don't know about it. I know about the city events, but I don't know about the community events. So if those events were sent to me, I can also, you know, just push it out and say, hey, this is a non-city event, but this is something that's great and positive happening within the city of Highland Park, so please come out.
All right, and then there's four people that are gonna be training for seven, seven hundred fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Is that included in that ten thousand?
Yes, yes. The training, all of that is included. But see, I already know the system. And they kind of took me through the backend during the tour part, um, to show me how I can just drag and drop, um, and change up the pages and, you know, make it look pretty where it's not so many words, but we have a little bit of white space and it's not, it doesn't just jump out and scare you with, you know, a million letters on a website.
If it contains all fields for a standard press release, it was that, is that something like if Highland Park was on the news or something?
So we have a press release section on the website. It's hard to get to, right? So all the press releases that I send out are actually on the website, but it's hard to navigate. It's hard to find it. And so that'll make it easier for us to access, for you to access, or any resident to access that information.
And our meetings as well?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
What about the department heads and they like, yeah?
No, 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 like seriously, I, I plan to build it out. If you ever get an opportunity, look at the city of Novi's, uh, and, uh, I was about to say Instagram. Look at their website and you will see exactly what I'm talking about. Because, um, you go to their website and it's, it's so beautiful because it has the kicker at the top that'll tell you, okay, these are the dates that the city is closed or, you know, these are the upcoming meetings. And if you click on, you know, CED, the CED director and everybody pops up, their faces pop up. You know, I wanna mimic that because people need to know who you are, what your positions are, who you're representing, the information about what you're representing, why you're representing, all that information matters. And so we need to get it out into the public, but the current website, I can't do what I needed to do because it's on such an older platform. I'm trying here, I'm trying. I gotta work with what I got.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, um, Mr. Shafi?
Okay, um. Will this draw any money, uh, from, from our IT company or is it just what's, what was in the budget?
No, it's just what was in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, because it was, um, well, it's not itemized. The budget wasn't itemized. But it was actually, if you ever get an opportunity, if you looked, it was a little, a slight little increase specifically for this.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna jig it just a little bit here. You spoke so well.
Okay.
On this subject, are you a IT person or is Lackey a IT person?
Lackey is the IT, but I handle, um.
I thought so, you spoke so well about it.
The website though, so the, um, updates and trying to keep it up to date as far as the meetings and agendas and all of that, I handle.
Okay, okay, so, um, so, uh, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna chime in on what Ms. Martin said. And that is the possibility, you know, you two of y'all, y'all mentioned the possibility, okay? And I'm looking at the fees, I'm looking at what's occurring, I'm looking at, uh, um, the, the, uh, increase over the next five years and the, uh, and the hourly rates. What exactly could we possibly, if you had a number for me, could we end up paying altogether?
Well, it was fourteen.
Okay.
So I was able to kind of get it down to the ten.
Okay.
And that's just with the bare minimum.
Okay.
That's with this, making sure that we're in compliance, that's making sure that the, we have the photos, we have the ability to kind of just drag and drop information to have the community calendar, um, because it was so much more added to this.
Okay.
But I said, do whatever you gotta do, get it down to what I needed to be, that was included in the budget.
Okay, and now that, 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 that budget also includes an additional two hundred and thirty-five dollars a monthly reoccurring fee, right?
Yes, because that's what was currently in, that was what was in the budget before, so that stays.
Okay, okay, so this has already been included into that budget as well?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I understand that people uh, love parties, they love events, they love fun. I spoke on this before. My concern is, we got the understanding about social media, which I despise. Uh, um, we got the understanding about parties and events and keeping the residents well informed. What about the business of the city? Okay, I'm more concerned about when I go on that website, the critical information, uh, uh, the, the meetings and the, uh, uh, and the agendas and the information that should be on their website for the residents to quickly get to and, and look at before they come here, none of that is available. And I've been on that website a dozen times. See, one thing about us is we're subject to the Open Meetings Act. And one of the parts of the Open Meetings Act is that this packet that we have is supposed to be on the website unless it's some sensitive information that's confidential. They supposed to be able to read exactly what we got in this packet and scan through it for themselves, but that's not available on that website.
So it is very difficult.
Yeah.
You know, um, to try and upkeep and, and try to upload information because there's a lot of errors that happen because we're on an old platform. So the, the idea is once we switch over, right? All the information in city council, you guys will have your own section, you know? Um, you can, you kind of have one now, but it's just words being thrown at the screen. There's nothing that, um, kind of leads you or gives you, uh, action cues, right? To say, click here for this or, you know, to access that. And so with the upgraded site, it will allow for us to, if a resident wanted to see, okay, well, what's on the agenda for today? It populates and pulls up all that information in a digital file, which makes it easier to read. Because right now, if you try to do it on your phone, it's horrible. You can't really pull it up. You have to drag it all the way over because the, it just, it's not user-friendly, especially on a mobile phone. And that's how a lot of people access information now, is on the go. Nobody is really carrying out their, carrying their tablets. They're, you're looking at your phones. And so it's very difficult to try and find that information while on a small screen. And so just having the site updated will just give us that ability to make it so much easier.
Okay, okay, and then, you know, uh, my concern also is, is that we've had this contract for six years.
Mm-hmm.
This, this website has been in disrepair for way longer than that. You know, so my concern is, is why did it take Muni?
MuniWeb?
Web.
You should have saw what it looked like back in two thousand eight.
Oh, I saw what it looked like back in two thousand eight, I was here. Yeah, I saw, I saw, you know, but that's just.
But the issue.
That's a, a, a very long gap.
Yeah.
For a contract in which we already have in place.
Mm-hmm, I agree. So the issue, so again, the issue that was, that kept coming up was funds, right? We gotta have the money in order to migrate it. Because everybody switched over back in twenty twenty when the pandemic hit, when everybody had to go to Zoom, when everybody had to be online. So the platform completely shifted to accommodate everybody being online at that point because nobody was leaving their homes, working from home, uh, meeting from home. So all platforms shifted. We just didn't have the ability to shift with technology. So now that we have the opportunity, I wanna make sure that we take full advantage of it to make it easier for everyone, including yourself, including anybody here in the audience. Because, heck, I need it because I gotta keep, I gotta keep it updated, you know? And so it's very frustrating, even on my end, when I'm trying to push out information and I can't do it in the capacity that I want to. And so, um, hopefully, you know, uh, MuniWeb can get it done faster than sixteen weeks. Um, because I'm already kind of working with them as far as building out the assessors website, well, not website, but that webpage so that they have their own section as well. So, um, yeah, I, I totally agree with you and all that information should be readily available. But utilizing the new platform will give us the ability to do so.
All right. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Manica?
Yes. Let them ask all the questions, so I wouldn't have to. On page five.
Mm-hmm.
It says, um, the labor rates?
Yes. So because we have a monthly fee, right? They, so the monthly fee incorporates about two to three hours worth of work. They, they do about two hours right now. I do the rest, right? So those, those additional rates is not gonna really affect us in any capacity because I'm the one on the backend doing majority of the work.
So again, that was my question.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
The other thing is the five years after launch.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then, so if after five years, you wanted to do something else, you'd have to agree to a two-year.
Exactly. So that's the time that we can, you know, re- revisit this, right? And say, okay, is MuniWeb who we wanna continue to stick with? We can go through that conversation at that point. Um, but, you know, that's, that's five years from now. Technology would probably be way more advanced than what it is today. So there may be new features that we might need and, you know, MuniWeb may not be able to, to do what we need them to do, right? Because five years, I'm hoping Highland Park is out here like Novi. So, you know, I wanna see, we may need more than what we currently have and we can revisit, um, another company at that time.
Really wasn't concerned with another company, just wanted to make sure that. And then my last question is, how much, so really what we're paying for is for them to be constructed?
Yes. Yes, exactly. Right, we'll ho- hopefully.
Yeah, just curiosity. How often does the platform change?
Um, so this, well, when I talked to Lisa, um, there shouldn't be another shift as far as their platform. They're just gonna be upgrading the platform that they currently have. So right now they're on like a two-point-two, um, platform and they would just be upgraded. You know how iPhones, right? You have the software that come out or Android. You have the software that come out and it's like fifteen-point-one and then they come out with fifteen ver- version fifteen-point-three. They do the same thing. So it'll keep us updated until there's such a major and drastic change that we say, okay, now we have to shift. But that shouldn't come up anytime soon.
So for the things that they're supposed to do continuously, will you or Mr. Lackey or both of you make sure that MuniWeb is keeping up?
Mm-hmm.
And that we're not slacking.
Oh, absolutely. That's my job. Exactly. All right.
Okay, thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Counselor President, I have just one more.
Mr. Shafi, what I, what I allow today is, based on Robert's rule, every member gets ten minutes and two questions. And we had, no, it's ten.
There was more questions?
No, there's, there's ten minutes and you get to address the floor twice. And so far we've deliberated on this for going on twenty-five minutes. So I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on item five, please? This is the Information Technology Resolution to redesign the city website.
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Thank you. Motion carries. Going on to, thank you very much, ma'am. Going on to item six under legal, this is the resolution to rescind. This is the resolution to rescind the fire employee personnel manual dated November nine, two thousand and four. City Council, what is your pleasure on item six A? This is the resolution to rescind the prior employee personnel manual dated November nine, two thousand and four, City Council, what is your pleasure on item six A?
I move to approve the resolution to rescind. I'm sorry, I lost my space, to rescind the prior employee personnel manual dated November ninth, two thousand.
There's a motion on the floor to, for related to the resolution to rescind the employee, prior employee handbook, Personnel Manual dated November nine, two thousand and four, do we have support? Yes.
Is that executive, is that Emergency Manager Order ninety-one, I think we need to include that.
Yeah, it is, it's ninety-one.
So that would be under the resolution, now therefore be it resolved, the City of Highland Park, City Council rescinds the prior employee personnel manual.
Emergency Financial Management.
EM, EMF ninety-one.
Can I rescind that order?
Yes, ma'am, so it will be Madam Clerk for that, that language here.
It will be now therefore be it resolved, the City of Highland Park rescinds the prior employee personnel manual, this is under EMF ninety-one, correct?
Yes.
EM. Emergency Financial Manager Act ninety-one, so I just put the abbreviation EMF ninety-one, and that will go prior to.
All right, got it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, man, council, what is your pleasure on the item that Mr. Shafi had us alter here, this is under six, legal, six A?
Can I have a turn?
You have a, I'm sorry, we have a, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, do we have a second? Chair offers a second, the floor is open if you have the discussion item.
She wanted to, you wanted to amend, what did you want, clarify the amendment, I think she wanted.
Yes, ma'am, the floor is open, Ms. Manica.
No, I wanted to ask where you put the um.
So. That goes before the word dated, so it will be now, therefore be it resolved, the City of Highland Park rescinds the the prior employee personnel manual under Emergency Financial Manager Act ninety-one. You can abbreviate. Order, order ninety-one, dated November ninth, two thousand and four.
It goes after dated November ninth?
Prior to, prior to the word dated.
Okay.
Is where we put Emergency Financial Manager Order ninety-one.
Okay.
I want me to read that again?
If you would go, if you would be so kind.
I move to approve, I'm sorry, I move to approve the rescinding of the prior employee personnel manual under E, under Emergency Financial Manager Order ninety-one dated November ninth, two thousand and four.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and that will be the resolution to rescind, so we just put the word to rescind.
Second.
And the Council President already seconded.
Okay.
So would you mind calling the roll on item six A?
Councilman Shafi?
Uh I do have some questions be- before we vote on this.
Mister Shafi, the floor is yours.
Okay, so um I just need a a a clear statement uh from uh from legal on the record. This order, this emergency manager order does not need a majority vote of four to rescind it, is that correct? And I would like for the record to show that.
You're asking?
I don't think it does.
I am asking the attorney if this order, because the reason I mention it is because we need a vote of four to overturn Omega's veto, we need a vote of four to auction or to a a a to to auction off property, we need a vote of four to approve development. The state issued this order, so I'm wondering, does it need a vote of four? I just want it on the record that i- that that it does or it doesn't, and I'm asking the lawyer for it.
So, based upon our city charter.
Mm-hmm.
The only um action that requires a supermajority is the mayor's veto. And despite what's contained in the property ordinance regarding for for developers, the only the charter speaks to that. This is not of one of those items, and so a regular majority would um be sufficient.
Uh I appreciate that, I just want it on the record.
Thank you, no further questions, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on item six A?
Councilman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
We're going to rescinding it?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Next under legal, this is item six B, resolution to purchase a digital FOIA system, council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve resolution to purchase digital FOIA system with question and discretion.
Have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica.
Support.
So we have support from that, from you, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Support from Ms. Martin, the floor is open, you have questions, Ms. Manica?
Is this yours, Chief?
It's kind of. Yeah, so I can help.
But also the uh, also the FOIA requests are typically from the Chief's department.
No, no, no.
Most, most.
Not Lisa?
That's not, they're not mostly, they're citywide. And the problem is, there's so many that we need a digital system.
Yeah.
Bottom line, there's so many FOIA requests coming in all day long, every day that you can't keep up with them, and we need a better system than what we have now. And that's why it's mandatory, because we end up paying fines, and we and you know, there's all kind of penalties for not staying on top of it, so we really need this, but they're citywide.
So we're paying fines and fees?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, Ms. Martin, did you guys, I said we're paying fines and fees?
You guys, because we have so many.
So. Um, I have a first proposal in accordance with the bill pricing, so this this is costing what, nine thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And what exactly does it difference it?
So what it does is, it it gives us the ability to track our requests and make sure that we meet deadlines that are required by law. And like, like was stated before, when we don't meet those deadlines, we're the city's fine. And some of those fees could be up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Can you give an example?
So let's say, I can only speak from the police department perspective, so let's say someone wanted uh to FOIA some video and police reports regarding the traffic crash. We would have a deadline to provide that information or ax- ask for an extension or give a reason why we're not gonna give that, you know, information provided that we meet the requirement under law. If for some reason we don't do that, because we're overwhelmed, because there's really only a handful of people, really a couple of people who are filling these requests, and they come in daily, um if we miss that deadline, we're we're fined. And like I said, the the typical fine is around twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, and that's just for the police department?
No, that's, that's for any request, um like Ms. Ms. Square said, that that could be, you know, if someone FOIA'd something regarding water or contracts, towing contracts, or what other contracts we may have in the community. We we're on a deadline to provide that information to them, because it's it's public information, and if we fail to do that, um you know, there's there's fines.
Or we use return.
Currently, we.
FOIA coordinator.
Currently have a person, Adrian Breckley, she's in the legal department, the problem is, they come in all different kinds of places. Maybe they come in through the mail, maybe they get lost in the mail, or maybe they go to this department or that department, so a digital system would perhaps put them all into one system, where she, if she's got twenty of them, then she has the dates and the deadlines, and maybe bring in resources to help get them out, but it's really, you know, weeks before Adrian came back, he had deputy uh city attorney doing it, so she had prosecution, I mean, she was asked. Uh for some reason, we are extremely popular these days, and folks want to FOIA every single thing we do. And we just, you know, paying a lot of fines, and that we're not keeping up with it, so this is just a a more efficient way of, or you know, excuse the technology, because right now, we're just doing it the old school way, where, you know, if it's lost, if it goes to the wrong department, if it goes to the wrong address, so inbox somewhere, and see, the city has a FOIA policy.
Okay.
So folks will know that we have this efficient system when they log in to find out, or call to find out how to pursue getting a FOIA from the organization. It's it's probably something that we need to do, because we're still operating like, you know, we're not in years.
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine, we should operate like that?
Yeah, it's, it won't hurt to have this.
Okay, so this, the benefit of this would be, it would get, we'd be able to cut down on our fines, get information out faster.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing.
And tracking.
Tracking, you said tracking?
Yes, and storage over the years, if I can comment?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, so the FOIA, for our audience, for our citizens, you know, that's Freedom of Information Act, and that's a state requirement, so when individuals request information, we're supposed to get it, get it to them within five days. If we don't get it with, to them within five days, we have to request an extension, so you have to immediately, by the time you get it, might be two days, it's already passed. But um you request an extension, you can get an extension for ten business days, so it gives you a little time. But as Ms. Square said, and the chief said, they come in from different departments, we tend to have a lot that come in for the police department, and Everett Monroe is the individual that assists us in records, uh and Adrian Breckley assist us in the legal department with that, I did do it for a short time, it is extremely tedious, because you have, again, many coming in one day, and you have to keep track as far as the timing, so the systems, we looked at three, we looked at just FOIA, uh next request, and Granicas, Granicas is used by the state, and so uh and they're part of my deal, which is one of the reasons that we're using them. And so it's a, you know, it's just cost efficient uh and an effective way to do business as far as keeping track, because oftentimes, you'll have multiple requests for the same thing, so someone might send something, you know, on Friday, and then, you know, two weeks later, somebody will make the request for the same thing, or a month later, so once you have a system in place that can track all of that, then it'll, then it'll be very easy. Right now, individuals go on the website, and then they can put the information, pull up the form and put the information in, and then it goes to the legal department, and then the legal department will send it out to uh whichever uh department the information is needed from, and then that department is responsible for returning of the information, so it it's a you know, can be a complicated uh process, but having a system in place versus an individual, um you know, will be much better for HP.
Is, is every department gonna come to the cost?
No, actually, it's coming out of the technology budget, it's not in the legal budget, but it's something that's badly needed, so it's coming out of the technology uh budget. Um is that correct, Director Lackey?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is coming out of the tech department and budget, is what we voted on in a month ago?
Yes.
So right now, that's nineteen thousand that's coming out of the tech department, but you don't have?
Yes.
We wouldn't ring it before you if we didn't, but it is badly needed, uh because as the chief said, if you don't get that information out in a timely fashion, then it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and we don't get routinely fined, but it has happened, and it could add up uh if we don't keep track, and there's certain mishaps that, you know, occur, but we're trying to prevent that. Uh so, you know, it's a good system for us to have in place, as Ms. Brown said, you know, we have to come up to the twenty-first century as far as our technology, uh so that it's easier for the residents to navigate through, and better for the departments to kind of keep things going, it's interdepartmental as far as the, you know, the use, it'll be easier uh to keep track that way as well.
Does it talk to the, you said the state is using the same system?
Granicas, they use the same.
Do, are we communicating in that way or not?
No, we don't have, no, no, so the information that's requested is specifically for Highland Park government issues.
Another question.
What if I do it, then we will go over storage?
Yes, it's twelve hundred dollars if you go over storage, it's a thirty-six month uh contract, I believe it's one terabyte, and so it's best efficient, isn't it, Mr. Lackey?
Uh yeah, yeah.
More than sufficient.
That's more than sufficient, be- because uh the only reason that you would go over storage is if you're sharing videos, because we have a separate platform from that, so we would go through the system, so documents, this is way more, probably won't get to thirty-four percent of that. And that's why we went with the pack, the essential package three, uh so that we we maximize some storage, just to ensure.
The other reason why this is good is because we are, we have a very small staff, and so it institutionalizes the practice, right now, if the person who's doing it quit, then everything's on the floor, and we start all over again, so you know, putting things in place, we are a very small entity, and you have very few workers, it's easier if there's a system, because another person can step in and do it with authority being set up.
Yeah, this is good.
Mister Shafi? Okay, um. Is this, is this a one-time payment, or is this a a recurring bill, because I'm seeing here, it says future year pricey?
So this is a thirty-six month contract, this is called my deal pricing, uh so year one, two, and three, and the fee schedules are listed here.
Okay, is it, is it nine thousand or nine hundred, or 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 is it nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two? Because it's almost ten grand.
So it's nine thousand the first year, uh this, the second year is nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and the third year is nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, okay, so this is a recurring fee then?
It's a thirty-six month group.
Okay, all right, um. Who printed this, Stevie won this? I can't read nothing on this thing, good God. Yeah, you know, my eyes is already bad, y'all killing me over here. Um. So o- okay, so this was something that was requested specifically by the IT department?
IT is funding, uh but like again, it's a citywide, it's kind of all departments, because it's a technology, it's soft. So because it's a technology that I built in IT.
Okay, I'm done, Council President.
Okay, so while we were sitting here deliberating, I just want everybody to know, a new iPhone will cost you fifteen hundred dollars, that's just for the phone, close to two thousand dollars for an iPhone, we're talking about software, state-of-the-art software for a municipality. These these prices, what it costs for a website, I mean, these are standard for for personal business, just a mom and pop to get a website, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for a website, depending on who you are, don't have anything fancy on it, and costs you tens of thousands of dollars, I just wanted to make sure the people in the audience are aware of the conversation that we're having, for two thousand dollars, you can get an iPhone. And we're talking about technology for a municipality, so I don't have any further questions, Madam, can we go ahead and call to roll for item six B, resolution to purchase the digital FOIA system?
Councilman Shafi?
No, too costly.
Councilwoman Martin?
It was very costly. I don't want to pay the fees either. And even if you get an iPhone, you still have to have the two thousand dollars to pay for it.
Yes. Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you, motion carries, thank you very much, chief, but don't go anywhere, because we had item seven, this is a resolution to purchase the intoxicilizer nine thousand. If I'm not mistaken, this device is to register alcohol content in a person's breath?
That's accurate.
Okay, all right, that's, that's twenty engineers, and uh two grizzly bears.
Motion to approve. Oh, Lord.
So we have a motion, um you want to repeat that again for me, sir?
I say, good Lord.
No, no, you said, no, I I I'm only interested in that what relates to me.
Motion to approve.
Would you please make a complete statement, please?
Motion to approve the resolution to purchase, however you say this name, nine thousand. Yeah, 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 could, could, could somebody uh properly say that for me, so I have it in my database?
I move to approve the resolution to.
I move to approve the resolution to purchase an intoxicilizer nine thousand.
Yeah, move to approve the purchase of an intoxicilizer nine thousand.
We have a motion on the floor for Councilman Ashafi. Second from Councilwoman Manica, would you please call to roll on item seven A?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you, motion carries. Um, item seven B, resolution to purchase a police, uh, purchase police scheduling software.
Motion to approve a resolution to purchase police scheduling software.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi. For the approval of the purchase of the police scheduling software, do we have a second?
Support with questions?
We have support from Councilwoman Martin with questions. Ms. Martin, would you please?
Yes. Hello, hello again.
Yep.
Um, I don't have a lot of questions, I just have one question. Did we look at anything else, any, uh, other type of software? Cause this is costing us another nine thousand. That's the magic number today, it's nine thousand.
Well, actually, the, so our current software is nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
We're actually, um, reducing that cost to our proposed cost, which is forty-eight hundred dollars for this new, new software.
It's not quite, costly as parts.
Correct, so it's actually reduction in cost.
Um, have we considered anything else other than tax?
Yes, so we actually had three quotes, obviously, one from our current provider, one from a, another company, and then obviously this company. Um, and they were not only the, the cheapest, um, but they met the needs of our department. In terms of, um, scheduling manpower and all, all of the things that are involved with that. And, um, the benefit of this program is it can be utilized, um, citywide, I believe, so.
The whole, though, let me say, city of Highland Park, right?
Correct.
I mean, you could use it for your, for your mobile, that was my understanding, right? That I read or not?
So, yeah, so we have the ability with our current system, but this would allow that as well. So we can, people can schedule or call in and, and modify their schedule with approval through mobile apps.
And this is the ease and the burden of payroll administration staff by allowing us to create an export of your payroll system at no charge fee, how, how would they see that?
So currently, our system is, again, pretty old. Um, so i- it's all Excel spreadsheets and met, you know, um, a lot of documents. We would be able to digitally send these to payroll and we can maintain, we could keep track of, um, people's time banks. You know, sick time, vacation time, things like that, and monitor that, but, you know, better. And it would alleviate some of the stress on, on, um, Ms. Williamson, who is, again, another one-woman show, uh, doing multiple people's jobs. And, um, you know, so this would alleviate some stress on her and, and HR as well. From sent, you know, when we send our, our, um, payroll on.
And so how long would it take to implement this system?
Uh, Charles, I, I believe this would be immediate, we could.
Uh, there's a schedule actually in the proposal, in the, that you should have, have to, uh, have a timeline and a layout of how long it'll take. Um, these are very sensitive records, so we want to make sure we get it right. So, um, I would probably say around March if you started in January. Um, worst case scenario, maybe we can move it a little quicker. But there's a lot of data that's attached to, to employees, especially police employees. So we have to make sure we get it right, validate the data. This is very important, because this is how people get paid.
Right, I get that. And then the SSO pricing for the state user count, seven hundred and twenty?
Yeah, so SSO stands for single sign-on and all it means is that, um, like, our, our Office 365, you know, I log into email. It allows direct integration to the system, so it doesn't create, it doesn't use username and password. So it's easier for our users to log into the system, that's it, that's what that's.
And so we'll be paying five thousand dollars for the whole year?
For the entire system, that's the entire system, that's not including it.
Okay, and that's including enterprise up to forty?
Yes.
So did you say fire to you?
Yes.
Yeah, so we could use it citywide.
Cause that's where our workers are.
Well, we, some may disagree. I'll say that.
All right, if I don't see any additional questions, I guess we can go ahead and call to roll on item seven B, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilman Ashafi?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And moving on to item eight under recreation, this is the resolution requesting approval for a transportation partnership. Council, what is your pleasure on this item?
Motion to approve with questions.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution. From Councilman Al Shafi, we have been seconded by Councilwoman Manica. What are your questions, sir?
Mister, uh, is the, uh, oh, okay, all right, perfect. So, um, real quick, uh, I'm looking in this resolution. It says that it will be of no expense to the city. But yet I'm seeing an expense of, 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 of almost a thousand dollars to three thousand dollars here. Is that, is that something that's being, being donated to us?
Actually, let's, so let, let's clarify, that additional document you're looking at is the certificate of liability.
Okay.
So what that's confirmed is, is that they have insurance. So that if anything were to happen to our folks, they have insurance. So that's really what that is.
Okay, now, question on that, uh, um, do you think that we should also have some form of insurance? Or are we going to have these, uh, uh, of people, uh, who participate, uh, in this activity to sign some type of waiver or something? Just to be on the safe side so the city doesn't incur any liability whatsoever? The last thing that we need is to have any form of liability.
Absolutely, and I think that's one of the things, first, we wanted to at least get this go, ball going. And I think you're absolutely right. One of the things that we typically do is we do have a, a waiver form whenever people are participating in. If this, as we figure out how we're going to use this partnership, we can make sure that they have one on record. So that if a person is going, that it's clear that when they ride on their bus from the city of Highland Park, then they're cashier, that's cashed, that's part of their waiver. But we'll work with legal on the appropriate way to do it so that we are always covered.
Okay, yeah, you know what I'm saying, cause that's my, uh, my main concern. I want to make sure the city does not incur any form of liability.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
No problem.
Additional questions?
And it's good to see you.
Uh, thank you.
Who pays them? Do they have a grant, is it our money?
Great question. So, so first I'll take a step back and just say, so Urban Solutions, they have already been doing work in our senior buildings already. So they actually get grants, um, grants, um, that give them support. And so they've been working on trying to figure out ways that they could better serve our city of Highland Park seniors. The challenge is every senior apartment doesn't have a service coordinator. So we all know in buildings that have service coordinators, things run a little bit differently than if you have just a property manager. So this is another way for them to help support our seniors and to capture a larger group just more than just the people in those specific buildings with service coordinator. So yes, they do have funding. Yeah, so in, and I actually saw them at one of the senior buildings, I'm like, well, what are y'all doing here? And then I started talking more and I got in contact with their, um, director and she started telling me about the thing she does. I'm like, hey, my seniors need this, 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 this. And she was like, well, I could help you with that, cause I have money. I said, well, this might be a partnership made in heaven. So.
All right, thank you so much, ma'am, so for item eight. Uh, we have a motion on the floor of our Councilwoman, the Councilman Al Shafi, supported by Councilwoman Manica. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on item eight?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes, as long as we protect ourselves.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have finished our agenda for tonight. The floor will be turned over for citizens' participation. I will be a stickler to, um, that's the two-minute rule. But before we do that, we are fortunate to have our clerk here to share with us some important information as it relates to upcoming elections. You would please give her your attention.
Good evening, citizens and council, thank you for allowing me this time. Uh, I'm just here to let you know that there have been some election law changes with the passage of both the twenty twenty-two, oh two. And as a source of the passage, uh, it's discolated, we will now add some new laws to the election law that is under the book. The approval proposal now qualifies all electors in the state of Michigan to have a constitutional right to vote in person at the early voting site. Early voting site, if you recall, is approved by the Highland Park City Council by res- resolution at a previous meeting. They established an early voting site and the location of the early voting site will be here at Denny Hall. The early voting site will be open for all federal and state-wide elections. Elections being held nine days prior to the election. It begins the second Saturday through the Sunday before the election. So that nine and ten, the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, which we afforded the opportunity to come to this early voting site and pass your ballot, not only vote it, but actually place your ballot to the tabulator that you would do if you were to your regular polling. So the state has authorized and mandated that each clerk in their jurisdiction must officially notify every elector of the new voting site. During the coming weeks, each Highland primary elector will be receiving one of these cards in the mail outlining the twenty twenty-four election cycle and early voting dates and times. On this card, it tells you every election that will be held in twenty twenty-four. And it will give you the dates that the early voting will start and the ending. And the early voting site will be open from nine to five every day. Now, you can continue to vote by absentee or in person that, uh, at your regular precinct, that's still an option on the election day or before by requesting a ballot. The first election, as I say, will be the presidential primary that's going to be held on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Normally, the presidential primary is held in March, however, the legislators changed that and they pushed it like two weeks before. So it will be, uh, February twenty-seventh. In late December, all electors who are permanent on the mail ballot voter list will attend the presidential primary selection form, which is being compiled by the state of Michigan. So they're not really sure how it's going to look and we haven't received it as of yet. But once we receive it, we will be mailing it out. And on that form, you must declare whether you want to receive a Republican ballot or a Democrat ballot. I think some of, I know some of you remember doing that some years ago. You had to declare what ballot you want. Now, if you don't declare your, uh, party and send the form back, we will have to continue to harass you to tell you to make sure you send that back. About it, because the ballot is just not a general ballot, okay? And the presidential primary is to nominate individual candidates for president of the United States. And I'm sure you all have been following the news, so you kind of have a idea of what it's going to look like and who's been nominated and all of that, okay? Uh, so, uh, the process is designed to, to, uh, to, and they will represent their political party in the middle of the election. So please check the latest news on the city's website for additional election updates or join me on YouTube for my charter mandated educational seminar on voting. Uh, the date for YouTube, uh, is to be announced, so just watch the website. Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that, so when we see this card coming through, you'll know exactly what it is, okay? So there's going to be cutoffs off there. You have any questions? Contact all this in person, email or by phone.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, now, now we will turn the floor over to citizens' participation. Be a stickler with this stopwatch today. So, uh, the floor is open for citizens who would like to address the podium. All you have to do is queue up right there, this is your city. Just a quick introduction and I will hit the timer and you can go forward.
Good evening, everyone, uh, City Spike, Parker Pride Alumni Association. Uh, just a reminder for December the ninth, which is this weekend, uh, Parker Pride in partnership with the city of Highland Park is throwing a Christmas festival. And after that, it's the light show that the city is going to put on with the mayor. I want to thank you, Mayor, for helping me, uh, put this thing together and doing what you've done to, uh, make this be a really nice, successful event. We invite and encourage all city officials, council to be at attendance at this. Uh, we're going to try to give every kid a toy. I got a lot of people working on this and trying to, uh, my alumni, eighty-four, they're trying to bring toys in. And then a lot of people's trying their hardest. We got a box at the fire station to put toys in. If anyone want to drop toys, we need toys. We want to make sure all the kids in this city have, have a Christmas, if they celebrate that. We also are giving, uh, Sam Wales. We wanted to give his daughter a Christmas. Uh, we're gonna, uh, surprise her with a, uh, the whole fixing Christmas. The food, the gifts, the whole shot. She shouldn't have to do nothing but sit back and enjoy that holiday without spending a dime. Parker Pride is going to bless her with a Christmas. That's the turkey and everything to go with it. Now, I don't know if she's a great cook, but she had an item to make it with. Uh, along with that, we invite the citizens, the senior citizens to come out. We have a tent, big tent, heated tent. It's going to be fifty that day, so it's going to be a great day. A heated tent for the senior citizens, we're going to have games, we're going to have prizes, we're going to have all kind of crazy stuff going on. All the groups in the city, I pulled them all together. Uh, we have, uh, we have Highland Park is going to turn the park on Massachusetts to a winter wonderland. It's going to be really nice. I want to thank We Have Highland Park for being a sponsor on that. And we also have all the other, um, Mama Shoe, Avalon Village, everybody's involved and doing something. They all got tables, they got, some are going to do, uh, gifts, backpacks, some are going to do books, some are going to, everybody's to get involved in this. Uh, senior citizens, we have a lot going on for you guys. If you guys want to come and just enjoy, we have entertainment. We have Deblon Jackson, she's going to play the flute, Christmas songs. We have, uh, uh, McDay Sisters, they gonna, uh, sing carols and it's going to be really, really nice. Uh, we have a drum line as well, we have all the schools involved, all the kids are going to come and do something. So if you guys can, uh, so, the leaders of our city, be at attendance at this. Show yourself, get involved, grab something to do, grab a table, give one of the, uh, groups that we have out here and help out. Let the scene, let the citizens see who you are and what you do and how much you love your city. I want to thank you again, Mayor, for doing what you've done and pushing this thing so we can have a great day. Thank you. Yeah, uh, excuse me, the time is from three to six. Six o'clock is the tree lighting ceremony for the city. And we're going to do carols and everybody's in attendance is supposed to walk down to the tree and do the tree lighting ceremony.
All right, but I was, I gave you three minutes, cause you know, I figured two minutes ain't enough. That's like, HP time is a minute, is an extra minute. So we got CP time and we got HP time, which is two minutes plus one, okay?
Good evening, my name is Renee for, uh, to the animal body and our, um, audience. I want to thank the mayor and the chief for the Narcon training. As a senior, I learned a lot about these different drugs that were out. So I really encourage the next time the mayor or the chief or anybody, fire department puts on these activities or this event, that they should come out, because we learned a lot. So I want to thank the man and chief for that. Then I have a couple of questions. My first question, and I know, Councilman Martin, you won't be able to answer it until you do your little spiel. But why did you vote no on item seven A? The next question is for Urban Solution. I keep hearing you saying, and the young lady that does the senior, I keep hearing the senior buildings, the senior buildings, the senior building. We don't have seniors that live in homes. We might not, if the water bill don't go the way it want, we might not have no seniors in these homes. But you keep saying senior buildings. I'm a senior, I live in my home. I have transportation, but we have seniors that don't have transportation. So if Urban Solution is willing to give us these services, stop saying senior buildings. Think about us seniors or those seniors that live at home. I get so upset when you say seniors, you're not including. Think about us seniors or those seniors that live at home. I get so upset when you say seniors, you're not including all of our seniors. So that's a request from my heart to stop saying senior buildings. And I don't ask for much, but when you make your announcements, please include homeowners or even seniors that rent.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. How are you, sir?
Great, thank you. I'm Barry Altman and I'm a candidate for thirteenth congressional district here in Michigan. That's kind of the capacity of my first issue, which is stores that sell bottles with deposits, cans with deposits should be forced to take them or stop selling them. Hard stop, period. People are carrying big bags up to these stores and they say, oh, our machine's broke. Okay, that's the first issue. Second issue, I'd just like a little bit of direction in how to engage with the blight removal component of the city. And my third issue is the sidewalk in front of my house was destroyed by DTE trucks changing out the gas line nearly two years ago. And it still has not been repaired.
Do you mind sharing your address?
Fifty-nine Florence Street.
Okay, anything further, sir?
Sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, just for the record, we don't do any campaigning during city council meetings. I didn't want to interrupt you. I want to be rude, but we don't do no campaigning during city council meetings as a rule. Thank you so much, sir. Yes, sir.
Pleading city council, everybody, HP. Again, my name is Mark Ashley Price. I'm the treasurer of the Holland Park School Board. I'm going to be as fast as I can. First off, I want to say happy holidays from the school district to everybody, the city council, all the citizens. Happy holidays from the school district. Also, I wanted to congratulate the city council on the pictures they have downstairs. I know they just came in after a year. Also, I want to thank councilwoman District One for making a holiday donation to Barbara School. I don't want to go in depth. I let her go in depth about that. Also, I want to thank everyone for letting me serve them on the school board. It's a true honor and privilege of my life to be on the school board, to serve the children and the city as a whole. I mean that, thank you, thank you. It's a blessing and honor to serve everybody in the entire city on the school board as I like to official. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And yeah, I hope I'm doing my best on the school board as well. I hope I please everybody. Another thing, I look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday for the holiday celebration because it's like one of those things in HP that we are trying to gather and I really look forward for the holiday celebration on Saturday. Again, happy holidays and I love you, HP. I love you, love you, love you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes.
Hi, everybody. Kathy Squirt, City Attorney.
Good evening.
I just want to remind everyone that after the last council meeting, the governor put four point five million dollars in fall for Highland Park residents to help with your water. So there shouldn't be anybody in this town getting their water shut off because between Wayne Metro and Saul and other assistance programs, which we will bring forward on the eighteenth, people should go in there and access that money. It's four and a half million dollars. So get there. I know people in this town don't like to go sign up for stuff, but the money is there. So that happened right the next day. I think Councilman Al Shopping was complaining and then recklessly the next day we got four million, four and a half million dollars in fall. So if you need that system, service, or if you know anybody that needs it, get down there.
All right, thank you. So now, having heard all citizens' participation, there's no one else at the podium. Ms. Madam Mayor, did you want to address as a citizen?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
And Glenda McDonald, regular folk. Glenda McDonald, regular folk. Go right ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk about the Toys for Tots program. The city of Highland Park Police Department is partnering with Toys for Tots. We have applications for children, for families to sign up. If you're in the audience and you have children or you have grandchildren that you're taking care of, the applications are downstairs on the desk in the lobby. Please grab one. We need those back by Friday. You can bring them back to the front desk. We want to get those toys to the families. So please, spread the word. I'm going to put it on the website. Hopefully, it can be navigated, but we're going to take care of that problem now that we got that, that's all. I'm going to put it, have it put on the website so people can come in, but please, spread the word. We have applications. The chief did a great job of getting Toys for Tots to give us six hundred toys. And so we have quite a few to service the community. In your community's council people, please, if you see somebody, send them there. Send them to the front desk, get the applications. We want to get them back so that we can service them. We will have a group, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and others in partnership also with the school district, the Highland Park School District. They will be there, the superintendent. And so we're all going to go over and pack these bags and for toys from the applications. You must have an application, though. We cannot give out toys without an application. Please, 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 spread the word in your districts across the city that there are applications. There's other groups doing in Highland Park too. But we also have some because we wanted to make sure that every single child in Highland Park receives a gift. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of citizens' participation for tonight. We will turn the floor for council affairs, starting with Councilman from the third district.
Good evening, HP. How y'all doing today? Okay, so I would, I would, first and foremost, I would like to ask all of you to keep Council Pro Tim Robinson in your prayer. She's in Ohio right now with her grandchild. Her grandchild is fighting for her life. And I ask for every single one of you to pray for that child that she makes it. Thank you. Real quick, I just want to touch on what Ms. Squier spoke about, about the water. She is absolutely right. There is money out there to assist Highland Park residents exclusively with Saul. And then there's money also as well in the, what's that, Wayne, Wayne Metro. But I, I want to simply say this, okay? There are a lot of people in this city that owe us a great deal of money in water. Water bills, sewage bills, fees, etc., okay? My concern is, I feel like we're riding the backs of the residents very hard here. Every, I have, I have gotten dozens of phone calls today because I guess they went on a little spree or a little raid with shutting off people today. And I had a lot of residents to give me a call, so I must speak to this. I understand that we have to collect the money for the water. But I feel like the collection is one sided. There are businesses here, apartment complexes, nonprofit churches, five oh one C threes. I know for a fact these people have extensive bills that have not been paid. They're very extensive bills. And if we're going to bring the hammer down on the residents, I must insist that we bring the hammer down on everybody equally. You don't just ride the residents' back and say, hey, you going to give me some money, okay? Because the residents who are living in their single homes, for most of you, water is essential. No water, no heat. It's winter time. A lot of people have boilers in their homes. A lot of, a lot of residents in these homes have boilers. I happen to be one of those residents. You know, so all I'm simply saying is, and I'm not going to get on anybody's back. If you're going to slap the hammer down on the residents, you need to slap the hammer down on these apartment complexes that is in the millions. You need to slap the hammer down on the businesses that are in the millions. You need to slap the hammer down on these five oh one C threes that aren't paying anything. You need to slap the hammer down on these nonprofits that aren't paying anything. And that's including the churches, including my church, if it owes anybody. Nobody should be exempt here. If you're going to ride the residents' back, I need you to ride everybody's back or get off of the residents' back. Because there should be some leniency for the residents. You're the only ones who have, who are paying at a ninety percent rate in this city. Not the businesses, the residents. And I'm tired of every time we turn around, we're trying to bleed the residents for everything that we got to pay for something that we need. It's like trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip. We are not the only ones here that owe. And we shouldn't be the only ones subject to shut offs in this city. Now, on another, another, another subject, real quick. I just want to quickly read something here because I had a very interesting conversation with the, with the legal department at the state house. So because something was said tonight that is clearly untrue. Okay, so when we speak about the charter and we speak about the rules and the regulations, understand the charter is the foundation of this city. It's your ordinance that give the charter the teeth that it needs to enforce the laws, okay? The ordinance give the teeth. And where the charter doesn't speak specifically towards something or doesn't speak specifically against something, that does not mean that it does not apply. So in ordinance two oh eight point eleven. Let me, let me grab my glasses here. Let's see here. Okay, it says here that the city, that, that city council may sell or lease real property using one or more of the following methods. Public auction, negotiated sale, listings, and real estate brokers to, to, to guidelines established. And that don't, I'm sorry, excuse me, and that you need, and I quote, a majority of four votes to do so. I repeat, a majority of four votes to do so. For any auctions, any sale of real-time property, leasing, etc., you need a vote of four to move this property around. But what was stated here tonight was, is that the charter doesn't speak to it. True, the charter doesn't speak to it, but it doesn't speak against it. That's why this ordinance was wrote. And this ordinance was wrote by the previous council. And as you know, the person who sat on this previous council for eight years is now currently your mayor. She was involved in writing this ordinance. This is her ordinance. So say what you will, they wrote this ordinance knowing that if it got challenged in court, it would stand up in court because the charter does not speak against it. It doesn't speak for it, but it doesn't speak against it. So this ordinance in the court of law would stand up. So I just want to make it clear, because the statement was made that you don't need a majority vote of four. This is a lie. The ordinance made it clear you need a majority vote of four to move property around. So again, I want to emphasize to everybody here, we need to pay attention. We need to read, okay? Don't take my word for it. It's there in black and white if you choose to read it yourselves. We have to stop being our own worst enemy. And we have to make sure that we don't set precedence that allow outsiders to come into this city and do something that is against this city. Because they're copying us. I've said this before. They're copying us. That's why they think they can come in here and do whatever they want, because we feel we can do whatever we want. I just want the rules and the regulations of the city to be followed. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any special treatment. I'm not asking for you to show me any favors. I'm asking for the rules and the process to be followed, the way that the law is written. I don't care how old and antiquated it is. If it's still on the books, if you haven't changed it, it's the law. I believe I mentioned this at the last council meeting. I said, if we had a law that said that I could sit on the sidewalk on a Friday in the afternoon after twelve PM, that's the law. As crazy as that may sound, that is the law. And until it's changed, you don't get to circumvent it. So I wish all of you a lovely evening, absolute amazing holiday. This is my mother's favorite time of the year. May God have mercy on her soul. So season's greetings to everybody. And I know that they say, say season's greetings. But I'm, I am simply going to say to those who celebrate, Merry Christmas and you have a lovely evening.
Ms. Martin, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me start off by saying, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it so much. To answer your question, Ms. Ford, you know, as a city council, our mission as the Highland Park City Council is to implement the city charter, make legislative decisions that provide good government, public health, peace, safety, and prosperity for the city. Prosperity meaning flourishing financially. You're, you're a renter or you're owner? You're owner, right. So I always got to consider what your tax dollar is covering. When you asked me, why did I vote no on seven A? It's because I found it for a lower price. Right. That's why. I found it, I will show it to you. I found it for a lower price. So that's why, that's why for me, it was voted no. Right now, we spend so much in each meeting. There's so much that we cover. I don't even know where we're going financially. I can't tell you where we're going. But I don't want to go in the direction where we were been ten years ago. That's not where I want to go. I want to focus on where we're going. So I'm always considering a person's tax dollar and where it's being implemented. So that's why I voted no on that. With that being said, I also want to thank a couple of people that came out and was cleaning up some of the parks here in Highland Park. I want to go ahead and acknowledge them. One of them is Mr. Shannon. He did some awesome work with the MLK Park. With that being said, I am just going to go ahead and keep it short and say, guys have a safe, what is it, December twenty-fifth? And on that note, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to City Councilwoman Manica.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Manica.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to bring some of the stuff that's going on in the city to you. Can everybody hear me? My sister's keeper is, was a recipient or is a recipient of the governor's service award this year. So congratulations to my sister, my sister's keeper for that, in case anyone didn't know that. Also, remember, baby is cold outside bundle distribution, nine to twelve on December twelfth at Avalon Village. That's where you can go if you are a Holland Park resident. That's according to what it's saying on the flyer. Holland Park resident, you must bring your ID. Also, I wanted to think, thank the chief for chatting with the chief. I enjoyed the training as well. You forgot I volunteered, Ms. Ford. I do apologize. Yeah, it was getting off the floor there. So anyway, don't forget also, we have somebody that is in the competition. I'm calling it, I guess we would call it a competition, CNN Heroes of the Year. I'm sure today, I think, is the last day to vote. Um, I'm sure today I think is the last day to vote, so tomorrow we will know. Also, uh, Revival Tavern apples, December sixteen, is doing a Christmas toy giveaway from twelve to twelve thirty. There's also a Christmas toy drive. I think that's Chief Phil also, or the city, they want new toys only. And then, thank you, Mark, for mentioning that I reached out to the school's barber myself, um, to barber school, actually, and to George Washington Carver, I'm starting there. Um, I was lucky enough or blessed enough that somebody thought to come to me and say, hey, we have, we're giving away fifty bikes, and that's the free bikes for kids. So I chose to go to the schools first um and get a list from them of students who may need. And then after that, I will circumvent out to uh my district and then out to the city with whatever I have left. If they have any extra bikes, they tell me they will let me know. So if I go over fifty, you know we get extra, right, guys? Other than that, I I'm really all in for tonight. Thank you. Highland Park decorating, y'all know me, decorate, decorate. Let's see some lights out there. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Um, one hundred and seventeen years ago today, at one twenty-five East State Street in Ithaca, New York, seven young men who were the grandsons, great grandsons of sharecroppers and slaves met in secret at Cornell University. In nineteen oh six, you could be lynched for being black and at college. But these seven young men, uh, bound by their circumstances and committed to serving their people, set out to form one of the most notable organizations in the history of the United States of America. Those men are Henry Arthur Callis, Charles Henry Chapman, Eugene Kinkle Jones, George Biddle Kelly, Nathaniel Allison Murray, Robert Harold Ogilvy, and Bertina Woodson Tandy. These men were nobodies on that day, except they were, for their family, the first men who had an opportunity to receive higher education. Those men who I just mentioned were the founders of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And today, December fourth, is our one hundred and seventeenth anniversary of the founding of our organization. Members of Alpha Phi Alpha have been everywhere. Thank you very much. They have been everywhere in history. Paul Robeson, Thurgood Marshall, Martin Luther King, Judge Mathis, Mayor Archer, Judge Craig Strong, the head of the um Michigan Bar Association, the Attorney General for the State of Wisconsin. I could go on and I could go on and I could go on. Um, I am a proud member of this organization. I was initiated on Friday, the thirteenth, nineteen ninety-two, at nine forty-one, forty-five. And upon donning this cloak, I took personal responsibility for the fraternity's motto. First of all, servants of all, we shall transcend all. And that transcendence means to ensure that all of our people, everywhere, from every class, from every religion, from every state, are represented by the members of our organization. We put service to our people above all other things. And today, I want to congratulate the brothers of the fraternity for maintaining this tradition and holding our light aloft. Having concluded all business related to the City of Highland Park, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.